Just amazing. And I had, no, I didn't know. And I had, I had a coffee card, but then I forgot about it because I got the attention span of a hiccup. Which is why you marry an engineer and then she keeps you all straightened out. But anyway, uh, she's just so smiley and happy and some of the subjects, you know, that are not easy subjects. And so that attitude is really catching. And it's like, you know, the people you enter the room and they bring you up. She's definitely in that category. So thank you so much.
All right, I'll go, um, yeah, my hat's off, uh, um, a couple of months ago now. Um, we appointed Cameron to the, to the board and, um, it is readily apparent to me that, uh, he is truly representing the Illinois Valley. He's engaged in the schools. He's engaged with the community and, and was a really great choice and has been a, been a great addition and just a good, good representative of, of the folks that live out here. And I think that's a, I think that's a real positive thing. Um, so thank you, Cameron. Thanks for stepping up. All right, um. Mr. Alderson.
All right. So might say something positive. It's not that I'm tall enough to reach this, um, is to, uh, all the winter coaches and athletes, uh, we started up winter sports uh, at the beginning of this month and, uh, participation rates are up in all of our schools. Um, and notably to the, the Ivy, uh, wrestling team. Um, lot of, lot of kids back. They've got a great, uh, great support out here. The youth wrestling club out here is phenomenal, um, and just a pipeline of great kids and great community support. So, um, it's mine.
Uh, last year we had, um, an amazing community partner that we got to recognize called Souls for Souls. And it's a nonprofit based out of Nashville, Tennessee, and they partner with school districts and community-based programs to give brand new pairs of shoes to communities who then can, can pass them on to, um, students who are experiencing houselessness or just are in need. And so we have been a partner for several years with them. This is our several meeting, three. Um, and this was our third year and we held over the course of the last two weeks, three shoe events. I will tell you, I would have loved the 60 degree weather because it was 30 and 28 degrees when we held them in the evenings outside. It was cold and it didn't matter because families got to come to Lorna Byrne Middle School, to, uh, Manzanita and to the district office and no one was turned away. Everyone got the shoes that they needed. A hundred and 77 shoes were handed out in those three events, plus another 30 this week. Two hundred and seven, if you're doing some mental math, I still have over 200 pairs of shoes to give out after the holiday. And I couldn't be more proud of my team who helped do it. And if anyone's at home and listening or in the audience and, um, it's like, man, I wish I could have come to the event. Just give us a call at the district office. We will connect it and get those shoes out to you if we have your size. So, thanks for supporting our community partners and just getting those shoes to families who need it. So, appreciate them.
Awesome. That's, uh, that's great. I mean, that's what a, what a great program to give shoes to, to, to kids. That's, uh, that's fantastic. Uh, Mr. Valenzuela, I'll let you go and then roll into your superintendent report.
Sounds great. I'll keep it brief. Uh, first thing I just want to recognize Three Rivers School District. So this week, uh, is the week before the holidays. And all of our students will tomorrow, when school gets out, they will leave to whatever they have available to them. Some students will go home to a house full of family, uh, full of great things, and some students will not. And for those students that will not, this week and even last week around the district, our schools have done such an amazing job of supporting kids, of supporting students, of making sure that they felt valued, they felt, uh, like something special was going on. Today I was at Fleming Middle School for their, uh, third annual talent show. And the kids were in there, just, they had so much fun. And so for those students that are going home to something else, this week has meant the world to them. And everywhere I've gone, us, our schools have done such an amazing job of reaching out and helping those less fortunate. Uh, food boxes have been going out at, in my mind, at a record, uh, rate. Like we are feeding Josephine County through the efforts of our schools. And I think that's really important. It's really important to recognize the collective effort of, of all of our schools and taking care of our students. We're talking about a lot of things tonight. But we're here to take care of the students that we serve in Three River School District, and that's what was happening this week. Uh, beyond my expectations. And so that was something really great. And I also, uh, moving into more of a, a business side of things, I want to thank the board for their, uh, approval of the use of the F's or dollars, the S's or dollars to create the athletic building here at Illinois Valley High School. We talked with the student panel today and I talked to them a little bit about me going to high school here. When I went to high school at Illinois Valley, this was the, this was the one school in Three River School District that didn't have a second gymnasium for practices and for all kinds of other things. And so it was just, it was a disparate, right? It wasn't the same as our other schools. And it's taken us a long time, but we were able to create something. It's not a gymnasium, but with today's construction costs, it was the very best we could do. And so I want to thank the board for recognizing that there was an equity, an, an equity here in the Illinois Valley and fixing it. And I know it will mean a lot to the students here, uh, in Illinois Valley, whether it's youth wrestling or, uh, fall football, when the wildfires prevent them from practicing outside because of smoke, they'll be able to practice inside this facility. Um, it'll mean a lot. So thank you so much. My superintendent report, as I said, is brief. Uh, I've given the board, uh, a piece of paper and it has two sides to it. And I'd ask you to refer to it real quick. The first side that says legislative timeline and key dates. As many of you know, the legislature goes into session next month. In fact, it says on your handout that the session begins on January 21st. Now, I felt it was important to bring this up to the board because you've talked a lot about things that you'd like to see changed at the state level. And Pat has made this reference on several occasions, so has Rich, that if you want to see things changed, this is your opportunity to do that. And it's to go to where the laws are made and lobby to change them. And so on January 21st, the session begins and there are several opportunities for you to weigh in as community members, as school board members on things you'd like to see impacted. Now I know that I will be going to Salem at least twice with COSA, uh, our, our administrative, uh, policy group here in Oregon. And we're going to be focused on a few things. That's on the backside of your handout. The things that we're going to be focused on lobbying for, things that K-12 education cares about, special education funding, unfunded mandates, K-12 facilities. So as you know, we have facilities that are in dire need of repair. We want the state to help us out with that. Student mental and behavioral health, early literacy, summer and expanded learning opportunities, attendance and workforce diversity and hard to staff positions. And Nancy and I had a conversation about this priority list, um, earlier last week, and she asked me a little bit about unfunded mandates. So I wanted to clarify what those unfunded mandates were. What are we going to ask the state to stop doing? Or give us money to do the things that you made us legally responsible to do? So that's what an unfunded mandate is. The state says, you need to do this and you're going to have to figure out how to pay for it as well. Some of the biggest unfunded mandates that we have right now is our special education funding inequity. So right now, uh, when we have special education classrooms, they take a lot more resources, right? So more people, more equipment, supplies, everything across the board. And they, they reimburse us to a higher degree, up to 11% of our students. So, so they would say 11% of Three Rivers students would be identified as special ed. And they reimburse us up to that percentage rate where in reality we fall around 16%. So that, that 5% disparity is not funded. And so that's an unfunded mandate. We have to take care of those students, but they're not paying us to do that. Another one would be our high cost disability students. So we have students that are medically fragile that we have to get a very specific bus for. And on that bus, we have a, a, a staff member that helps them get on the bus, get off the bus and, and all those different things. And that, that takes on different forms for, for whatever that student barriers that student faces, right? And that all costs money. And so we're asking the state to reimburse us for those high cost disability costs as well. Because by law, we have to address those and we should address those. We should make sure those students have access to school. But we should also receive funding that's adequate to take care of those students. Another one that's kind of maybe easier to understand is PE minutes. So a few years ago, the state said, you have to up your PE minutes in elementary, middle and high school. You have to offer more PE. And they gave us very specific minutes per week. That required school districts and schools across the state to hire PE teachers, um, at a record rate. And for us, it was, it was a, a pretty big number. I can't remember, maybe seven or eight teachers. And as we know, when we talk about the budget, if we talk about what an FTE or a full-time employee costs, that's a big number. And so the PE mandates was another unfunded mandate. If they wanted us to provide more PE to promote student health, they should have paid us more in the state fund, in the state fund, uh, formula. Okay, the last two, uh, unemployment. So back in the day, uh, when you worked at, at a school and you got out in June, you got out in June and you came back in September and you had summer break. Uh, you weren't eligible to collect unemployment. Now it is state law that you do collect unemployment, which could be fair, uh, for those, those people not working in the summer. However, that became a law and a requirement that we cover unemployment. But it was not funded. So we didn't receive any money to do that. And the last one that comes to mind is our special ed stipends. Now our special ed teachers go above and beyond and we talked a little bit about that and they deserve a stipend, right? But that became a law that we had to provide a stipend to them. And the, the state gave us some money, but they didn't cover employee costs. The employer costs, excuse me, so our costs, so insurance, retirement, all those employee costs. And that's about 35 to 40% of that total salary. So that's an example of things that we'll be lobbying against. If you're going to pass a law in Salem, pay for it.
This is a game. And I know I, I, I recognize a lot of you out there that are concerned about the school system. The game is this, that they make laws which you don't like and you don't think it's unfair. They pass them. They pass regulations. They force us to do it and they try to blame us for it. We don't have the power to change these things. He's giving you an opportunity to harass. I'm, I'm, I'm much meaner than he is. Uh, the officials that are causing the problems, they can actually fix it. Until then, we can only communicate to us what's happening and, and, uh, and the limitations of our power. So if you believe these things that should be changed, talk to Dave and get up to Salem. And it'll probably take five to 10 years to, uh, get them all changed, but, uh, you gotta start. And, uh, and that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Any questions for Dave?
Yeah. So if that, that grocery, the total cost of the box is full of groceries, they think, they think we should pay for. How much is that? Is that tens of thousands, millions? Billions? I mean, how much, how short are we?
Like that list of unfunded mandate?
Yeah.
That's several million, to just Three Rivers, that's several million dollars.
Cause I mean, I want a Lamborghini, but, uh, you know.
Me too.
That's a, that's a wish list. So what bargaining chip, what bargaining can we do with the state? Is there any way we can bring to the table, say, look, you want this, we want this?
Well, yeah, I mean, what, what's happening right now is collective advocacy. So the list I have, I didn't create this slide that I handed you, that was created by COSA. And so that is something that we are going to collectively go to Salem and say, this isn't working. And, you know, legislators are a lot like school board members, right? They're people. They get voted in. They go and they listen to their constituents and they go up to Salem and they lobby and they work and they pass laws. And so when we go up and talk to them while they're working on these laws, it matters. I mean, it, people change their mind and, and things change up in Salem all the time during a legislative session. And so the collective advocacy is one of the biggest, biggest things we can do.
Uh, just one other comment and, and, and I'll, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, just so you know, on the, uh, for the board members on the back page of the agenda, um, there's still time to RSVP for the legislative meeting, meet and greet on January 6th. So the, for the OSBA reception, I plan on going. Um, and so, and so if, if you plan on going, uh, either RSVP yourself or let Shelley know and she can send out a collective, uh, RSVP.
I'd like to go.
All right. Up next, uh, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to, oh, community partner of the month? I'm sorry.
So Casey, uh, are you introducing community partners? Eric, Eric, bring it on. Let's go. It's your, where the stat, where the?
All right. Uh, so I'd like to bring up Jordan Reyes, if he's come on up. Yeah. So, Jordan has, uh, here you all give this. You, thank you, thank you so much for all you do. Um, Jordan, I don't know if you saw when you came in, but, uh, that cougar that's in our circle, Jordan was instrumental in, uh, in making that happen. Um, he had some partners and, uh, and, and I'll, I'll mention them as well. Uh, but Jordan spearheaded it. It took him, I'm going to guess, eight months to a year. Yeah. Uh, and, uh, was the artist and, uh, really it's, it's an awesome cougar that's out there. And, uh, really I think, um, uh, is really super cool. And so the partners that helped him, and if I forget anybody, please, uh, let me know. But obviously we have the Reyes family of the, uh, Tonga, Tongva, Tongva tribe. Um, we have the Gibson family, the Ledford family of the Cow Creek tribe. Um, we also had the Equity Project of Josephine County, uh, were supporters. Robert Black, uh, Cat and Brier, uh, it's a burl, which is you drive by it every single time, uh, you come out to Cave Junction. And then, uh, Rogue Truck Body, well, we're all involved in the creation of that. And, uh, we are super appreciative and thank you, Jordan, so much for all your support and help, Illinois Valley High School.
Quick, quick photo op.
Jordan, come on up here. We gotta get a picture.
It is my honor today to, um, recognize Trina Mason and the River Valley Restaurant. Um, her daughter Shelby is here today as Trina had a previous family engagement that she couldn't get out of. But to talk a little bit about Trina, first of all, she's a graduate from Three River School District. She graduated from North Valley, but did attend Ivy at some point, um, during her time in high school. Um, she bought the restaurant in 2011 and since then has been supporting Ivy and our extracurricular activities. Anytime we ask her to do anything, she does it willingly and gladly and with a smile. She has gone to FFA, supports FFA auctions. She actually this fall went as a chaperone to the Nationals in Indianapolis um, for FFA, um, wrestling. Those boys don't get to eat a whole lot before weigh-ins and after weigh-ins. Um, consistently there's usually fruit and, and vegetables there for them to eat that Trina provides for them. Um, at one point previously, she also supported, um, Joe's Place. Um, also hosted at her, at her restaurant. So Trina has just put, is always willing to help, always willing, um, to go the extra mile for our students. And I just wanted to recognize her today.
Don't get my slippers in it.
Uh, thank you to the community partners. Do you, really, this is an awesome part of the board meeting. So, uh, we really appreciate, uh, all you do for, uh, helping our students out throughout the district. Uh, with ups next is the consent agenda. Um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any, any, uh, discussion on the consent agenda? All right. Uh, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right. All right. Uh, up next, community comments. Um, we have one, two, three, four, five. Did anybody else have a chance to, want to make a community comment? If, if so, you can see, you can see Shelley. She'll get you, make sure you get a comment card. Uh, starting up, uh, looks like they're in some way alphabetical. So Judy, you're up first.
Thank you. And I first want to wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas. And the reason I wear this pin, it says it's okay. You won't be arrested. We live in America, so you won't be arrested. You don't live in Cuba. So it's okay to say Merry Christmas. Um, what I want to say, I was gonna, I keep changing my notes because, uh, Mr. Valenzuela, you said some interesting things here and I took a lot of notes on all these mandates from the state. And, um, I just, a quick 22nd, um, story is that when I was on the school board, uh, we had a mandate too. You know, it was on the gender issue, believe it or not, that was actually back in 2004. And, uh, we stood our ground. We stood our ground. And they, boy, the community just went outraged, like, we're not gonna get that $40 million. Uh, but you know what? We hired a, a really sharp attorney, Mark Buker, and you know what? We didn't have to go according to what they said we had to do, quote unquote, the state. We got our $40 million, but boy, the, the community with the not being informed was just outraged. So, um, regarding all these mandates, my comment and suggestion to all of you. In fact, I'm going to address you because it said, well, we have to do it. You know what? We, we, we have to challenge the, the Salem because they are, in my opinion, crazy. A lot of them are crazy. And I want to say crazy. Because they will say, maybe you can't wear a shoe someday. You have to go barefoot. I mean, whatever it is, they'll keep stretching and pulling the envelope. So just remember that. As much as you say, we've gotta, gotta do it. I think we have to concentrate on the kids. And regarding the sports, I mean, I remember in fifth grade, we were out there just running around the track. We didn't need a quote unquote, a, a new sports advocate or teacher or whatever. All these little programs, I think, we have creative teachers here. And I think they're very, very intuitive and they can get these kids exercising and doing their exercise and all that. We don't need these mandates. Um, otherwise they claim you're going to take away some money. So, I would challenge them. I would challenge you because it worked when I was on the school board and I think it worked here if you start challenging. Um, another thing I wanted to, just to get back to Christmas, how important Christmas is. We talked about Mr. Valenzuela, he talked about the food bank and everything and that is super. And I was telling him at the, uh, commissioner's meeting this morning, this is a time to look at what neighbor on your street doesn't have a place to go to have dinner or lunch on that date. Uh, a neighbor who's, who's lonely. Um, we have people that, uh, aren't going home for Christmas. I think there is, I met some this morning. So invite them over for that meal. Invite somebody. Um, you know what? Go to a convalescent home and do some playing the piano. That's what I did recently. It was a pretty bad piano, but anyway, they loved it. Um, uh, go caroling, try caroling. And then I got an, an idea on, um, American Family Radio. I listened to a fantastic, uh, radio program, AFI. And they mentioned, go to the prisons. How many of these prisoners who've done, and you know, some kind of violation and they're sitting in some cell on Christmas Eve? You don't have to go on Christmas Eve. You can go a couple of days before Christmas. There's so many charitable things to go. And again, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Judy, and Merry Christmas. Um, Mr. Lamel.
Is there any possibility that I could get 51 seconds extra? Because if you give me 51 seconds extra, I might not come back anymore.
Well, that just took 20.
Okay. Can do what I did last week. Just stopped in the middle. Board member superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, my name is David Lamel. About 30 years ago, I spent three years on the Three Rivers School Budget Committee because I wanted to help the kids get a better education. I failed miserably. I just failed. Not one single accomplishment was made to help one single student. The night I resigned, I stupidly suggested all school properties be sold, all school personnel be laid off, but all public school taxes remain the same. Sounds stupid. As a codical to my suggestion, I suggested each baby born in Josephine County be registered and tracked for 18 years. Based on last year's budget numbers, each child that graduated high school cost the taxpayers $416,000, plus or minus a little bit, plus preschool and kindergarten. These kids could be, by the tracker, offered a free three or four bedroom house of their choice on their 18th birthday with no mortgage. And hey, marry somebody else that's 18 years old and you'll have a free house and a two or $3,000 a month income. What the heck? Good deal. Uh, maybe not reality. My point is getting back to reality simply, the kids deserve a better education than they're getting. Failure rates for students are atrocious in Josephine County. The United States student rate is about 30th in the world of quality of education. 30 is pretty bad for this money that we spend. I told you folks last meeting, but I'm having a horrible problem with deja vu. Nothing, nothing, nothing has changed for 32 years since I've been on these school boards. Meetings. It's eating me up. We hear things like, we are starting some new programs. It will get better. We need better funding. Thank you for your input. We appreciate it. We are so proud of our kids and their accomplishments. My kid is student of the month. We need tens of millions of dollars for roofs. I have possibly good news for the superintendent and the board tonight. If you do not want to put a citizens group together, including the attorneys, volunteering, school boards, students, educators, community leaders, the sheriff, budget committee members, et cetera. I will stay away and I will accept the fact that I have for the second time in my life failed to assist the kids to get a better education. On the other hand, if you want to explore how to change the status quo, I will help you. Am I done? In conclusion, I've been on 52 worldwide cruises. I've been on 25 or 15 or 50 worldwide flights. One, it's all the way around the world and I didn't know it. I've climbed inside the top of the Great Pyramid in Egypt. I've been to the peaks of Machu Picchu. I've climbed inside the top of the Great Pyramid in Egypt, I've been to the peaks of Machu Picchu, been adored by King Tut's tomb, crawled into the Vietnam tunnels as a tourist, twice been to Russia, walked most of Angkor Wat in Cambodia, climbed the Eiffel Tower, transited the Sifan Tunnel, which my grandfather was the chief engineer on. I've been to all the major rivers in Europe, sailed the Amazon River, the Mekong River, I've visited 75 different countries, eaten at matzah kazzis in Japan and in Grants Pass. So what? I also formed a group of people who changed the Walnut Creek School District into a most outstanding district in the San Francisco Bay Area 40 years ago, and it's still an outstanding district. My wife Sandy and I have a half a million miles of free air travel. I'd rather not travel, I would rather come here and be part of a group that looks at us to see how can we make our kids do a better job of getting educated. I've also noticed the education level of all the kids that I've seen around the world. It's, I'm not gonna say that. I don't wanna broadbeat Ford any longer. The definition of insanity I hear is doing the same thing over and over and over and expecting a different result. Don't let the tail wag the dog any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I've been to Glendale. I've, years ago, when I could afford the bus. Anyway, thank you, Dave, that summed it all up. But anyway, I've, I've got a few little items here, I'm disappointed. This board's been changed since last March and has done nothing. Let me say that again, you've done nothing. Case in point, last May, the public asked for the American flag to be flown at the schools. Oh, that sounds like, that's a good policy, we already have a policy. And here's the old policy. US flag will be flown outside the buildings, and the district shall obtain and display a flag, US flag, appropriate size for each classroom. That's good. What we objected to was there was different flags in the classroom. There was political flags, Black Lives Matter, gay flags. That doesn't hack it with this community. So we asked that only an American flag be flown in the classrooms. So here's the new policy that I believe we're gonna do a first reading. Only the American flag will be flown outside, but back in the classroom, we're just gonna supply the American flag like the old policy. Now, I don't have to go to Salem to change this. All I have to do is ask you to read it and change it, that the only flag in our classrooms is the American flag. As a veteran, it's disrespectful to put anything else in these classrooms for the kids to pledge allegiance to. That's all we're asking. The district shall obtain an American flag and it will be the only flag in the classroom. That's all we're asking. You make policy, not Salem. You have the governance to run what goes on in these schools. In here, the legal references, I looked them up, I looked them up. You have the power to do this, to say only American flags in our schools, in our classrooms. Do you have the guts to do it? I don't know, I'm worried, because nothing's been done. The opt-out letter, it's harder now than ever to find out what the curriculum is. It's not on the internet. I'm gonna go on January 6th and look over the sex ed stuff, because that's when I can go in. It's only a week before the letters, the opt-out letters go out, a week. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Raykraut.
Yes, thank you, board and, and staff, and Merry Christmas to everybody. We're only a week out. Like I say, I started saying last time I'm here because Jesus loves me, and that's why I'm doing what I'm doing here tonight. I'm here because of my frustration, I'm here as a broken record because I'm going over the same things that I've been talking about since last May. First of all, is the library book situation. It seems to be making some progress. Superintendent Valenzuela took a meeting with me on the phone for half an hour, we discussed the procedure, we're working on that as well. I'm not happy that it took so many months to get down to the exact form and how that is to be handled. And unfortunately, since I'm not a member of the district, I can't submit a form myself, even though I'm a taxpayer. So we're working on that, hopefully we see some progress. I know Rick went in with a complaint form, and there was more focus on why he was there than the actual content of the books. I've sent out emails to the board with excerpts from the books, and no board members ever answered or had any comment as to what was in those books that I shared. So that's disappointing from the board. We've got a Parents' Rights Proclamation tonight, we got Dave Valenzuela, superintendent, who's opened his door to discuss. But we're not seeing the action from the school board that we need to see on critical issues, including the opt-out policy. And I'm gonna refer to May 15th board meeting, Pat Kelly. Pat, you read, you had read the opt-out letters, and I don't think they're adequate, we're bleeding students. I think a significant degree because people have religious beliefs that are not respected, or they fear they're not being respected. The further you get from the values of Justin County ordinary citizens, the more you're gonna shrink the school. We can achieve both goals and meeting your curriculum and making sure every parent who wants to opt out has a right to do so, and knows exactly what the curriculum says. I think whenever we do an opt-out, I'm gonna propose that we investigate as much as we can to be explicit on what's being taught. Talking about oral sex, you say that, you're talking about oral sex, you're talking about homosexual relations, and not just the generic human sexual relations are being discussed. You need to be specific, Pat said that, Rick's brought it up every meeting, nothing has been done by the board, and now we're on the verge of, of having that health curriculum started in January, and the opt-out is weak. And the board needs to take action on that, and they've not done that. So I'm frustrated, a lot of people are frustrated, the board needs to take action, it's your responsibility, that's why you were elected. I come to every meeting, and it's a broken record, we complain, nothing happens, thank you.
All right, up next, Ms. Rossi.
All right, I have a few issues I want to address. First, I want to say I second everything that everyone has said before me, so I, we strongly agree that, you know, the only flags that should be flown in the school, no matter where in the school, are official government flags. The US flag, I'm okay with the state flag, and you know, possibly a school flag, and that would be all that I would find acceptable. Also, the health curriculum, I know you are mandated, but it's atrocious and parents need to know exactly what they're signing up for. That's the only way to get this community to trust you again, and then maybe they'll start voting for school bonds. So at last week's, last month's meeting, you guys voted on a couple of agenda items for your school board organization that were very antithetical to this community's values. And Pat happened to mention, oh, are we voting to opt out of the School Board Association too? You need to. This is something that you voluntarily give our tax dollars to that is antithetical to this community's beliefs. Now, the Community School Boards Association of Oregon is an option. I know that that's the school board association that grants pass. I believe they're still in it, but I know for a long time they were. They took a major leading role in trying to fight the health curriculum back in 2023. That would be a much better fit for our community than apparently what they're trying to push at this other school board association. I also, has not been mentioned yet, that the At-A-Glance Report profiles are posted finally for the 23-24 year. There were small improvements, I will grant you that, but we are still, our scores as a district are atrocious. 23-24, 35% of third graders are proficient in English. And we all know, at least I hope we all know, the stats of how bad a person's life is projected to be if they cannot read by third grade. Barely a third of students are reading at a grade level in this district, and that's up 7% from the year before. In math, 25% of eighth graders are proficient in math. These numbers are absolutely unacceptable, and I want to know what the plan is. I want a specific plan, I want to know how we're gonna measure it, what time these measurements are gonna come due, and what the consequences are for not meeting these numbers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll give the board a chance if they have any reflections on the community comments. I do, at least it's... Oh, well, we get a bonus. Well...
I, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I, do I have them here? I'm sorry. Here we go. I'm irresponsible. It's not a problem, not a problem at all.
All right, Oliva, you're up.
Trying to explain to people, when we have leaking roofs, why we put in tampons in every single boys restroom in the school district is very difficult. Just to just add to what Mariah was saying, if you want school bonds to pass, you're gonna have to start getting a little realistic. The sustained and coordinated effort to include pornographic material in the Three Rivers School District K through 12 public schools is a multifaceted issue. But the most important thing is that these graphic materials are already in our local school libraries and are being used in our children's classrooms. Forty-three states have passed obscenity, obscenity exemption laws that eliminate any liability associated with using these graphic materials if they are employed for educational purposes as part of courses of instruction, or if they are in libraries in K through 12 schools. Distribution of this material off school grounds would be considered criminal, but exposing our children to it during school hours is somehow deemed educational. This means that someone who provides obscene or vulgar materials to a child will face fines and jail time for harming the child, except when that person is a teacher or a librarian providing materials in this school, in these schools' classrooms and libraries. Over the years, the concept of freedom of speech has expanded well beyond spoken or written words to include expression of all types, literature, art, political activity, photographs, broadcasts, internet postings, as courts have attempted to protect all methods of self-expression from censorship. Throughout our nation's history, however, certain categories of speech have not been protected by the First Amendment, which means the government can limit the activity. Obscenity is not protected under the First Amendment, the First Amendment right to free speech, and violations of federal obscenity laws are criminal offenses. Even if Oregon has passed or passes obscenity exemption laws, this does not give the state carte blanche to expose minors to pornographic pervasive vulgar material. We, the people of Josephine County, and a petition has been started because I'm just tired of people thinking that this is all me. People keep flogging us and are interested, you know, in this stuff right now specifically. If, we, the people of Josephine County, have awakened to this dark agenda existing in our schools and have begun to realize that people and/or institutions need to be held accountable for these decisions, or the lack of making the necessary adjustments to start protecting our children from this darkness. This district has made it difficult for parents to understand these materials and its coinciding agenda exists in our schools. One, making parents dig to find these pervasive vulgar materials themselves. Two, making parents conduct the research that should have already been done by district employees. Three, making the complaint process tedious. Four, making the complaint environment uncomfortable, such as district employees showing their support for sexual preference pride by wearing its symbology during school district work hours. Sorry, I didn't get to finish, you guys get the point, thank you.
All right, now I'll ask for reflections, and I think Cameron probably had...
One more.
Oh, yeah, I think we got one more. Oh, I'm sorry, we keep doing this. Becky Lemler, I'm gonna start moving.
Thank you. My name is Becky Lemler, I'm a member of the Three Rivers School District, and I'm also a member of Parents' Rights in Education, which is a national organization standing up for parents' rights in education. So I'm really happy to see that you're going to be voting on this resolution tonight, but I would like to make a suggestion that, to, to stay with consistency's sake, to use the same wording at the top of, of the resolution as is stated at the bottom. On the bottom, or, eh... Yeah, at the top it says Parents' Rights in Education, and at the bottom, if you could also say underneath Three Rivers School District School Board, then underneath that it says Parents' Rights in Education Resolution. If you could just add those two words, that would be so wonderful. And the other thing I would like to bring up is on the flag display policy. I don't know, I don't, I don't know if that thing also pertains to pins and little stickers that people wear on their clothes. I think that would be nice to add that in there too, that if they wanna wear pins, they're American pins, but not, not these other strange pins, political things. Thank you, do you have any questions?
I got, I, just some quick information.
Sure.
It's, I'm... To tell you the truth, I've been on the panel for about a year, and it's taken me a year to figure out how the system works, where the defects are, and how to fix them. It is, it is, our, I think as a group, we want to start changing policies. And we're going to try to do so at a rate of one or maybe two a month. I, I'm an attorney, I know how slow systems work in government. We are adopting a Parents' Rights provision this evening, a resolution.
Thank you.
Well, next month, excuse me, the first reading. And then, in response to the flag, we have a flag proposal, I haven't seen it yet. It's up for modification, you, you guys submit any changes you want, but there are some problems with some recent Supreme Court cases, you're worried about pins that people wear. Well, they also allow crucifixes and stars of David, and if it's a personal effect, the Supreme Court has said we don't have a right to take it off that person. I guess if it were, you know, a Nazi pin, we could probably get away with it, but with our current political situation, I cannot extend exclusions to, or say jewelry. Because if we take out a pin that you don't like, I'm going to have to demand that the art teacher in one of the other schools take off his crucifix. And that's, that is, that's just a free speech issue that's been decided, I can't do anything about that. And, and, and to a certain degree, I don't want to, just simply because if you wanna convince somebody not to wear a pin, then you have, you have to convince them. And, and go talk to the person that you find offensive, and, and have a civil conversation about it, because we can't as a government entity interfere with that. So it's, that's unfortunately the state of the law. And so that, but so anyway, I'm trying to figure out a, a change a month or every two months, and I want publicity for that change. Our man with the red glasses? Where is he? No, there are publicity guy, we need to get this out into the public in a big way, so it seems that we're changing, we are changing. I just can't do everything as fast as you can. I read most of the book's tricks, you don't wanna, I don't wanna read that. I, I have, but I can't be here every night, our, our meetings deciding which books are in and out. be here every night or our meetings deciding which books are in and out. I got to set up a system to do that. So I, I, Dave, uh, sigh suffered. Uh, we're going to use tricks as the first book passing through. I have copies of the offensive passages or could be offensive, and we're going to see if it works. But we have to set up a system. I just can't, we, the board can't read all these books. And, uh, and we have to protect what goes into the libraries and we have to do it in a, in many ways, a subtle way so we can be effective without creating too much controversy on that line because it's Oregon I live in. So anyway, the, uh, that's, we're, we're listening to you. We're doing it. We can't do it at lightning speed. And, uh, and, uh, and, um, anyway, that's, that's, and I, I've got the three more years left. And I'm just going to keep pushing. And remember, what you actually saw uh, over the month was the patriotic, um, uh, bands at the, uh, the flag pole, which, which not only was wonderful, it gave us good publicity. And, uh, and I don't know if you attended or not, the veterans appreciation ceremony, and they asked me why I was crying at lunch, the other attorneys. So anyway, good things are happening. We have to advertise them. And I, and I listen to everything you guys say. I just can't move as fast as you want. So like I said, if, if, uh, I have to see, we asked them to draft a policy about the flags. I got to see if it falls within uh, uh, state legality to do it, but if I have my way, the only two flags we would be displaying is the state of Oregon and, uh, and the, uh, United States flag. And, uh, and we're going to go as far as we can, at least I am, to the point where a law confronts us to not do it. So anyway, we are doing it. And the other final thing is, is I, I never do appreciation because, because, um, I'm just that, not that nice. I don't, one by one, I'm nice, but I'm usually grumpy by the time I get here. But I'm going to say one appreciation completely out of order. I appreciate everybody that takes the time to come here and to tell us what they think. And as we go through these policies, you review them. You tell us what's wrong with them. You propose new policies to obtain your objective. Um, and it does take time to do it, whether anybody likes it or not. And the state is responsible for a lot of horrendous things. And, uh, and, and we have to do our best, that, that's where the battle is largely fought. We could just direct you where the battle is and who's, who are the generals on the other side. So anyway, but, but anyway, and we're all trying to make the system work better. So, uh, it, it should be Josephine County schools, in my opinion, um, should be more important than being necessarily a, um, a state of Oregon school. And something that complies with the larger culture here, and that's our, that's my objective. And I think that's a lot of your objectives too, but we got to do it within state law and sometimes it gets complex. So thank you. We're going to keep on going and, uh, and, um, tell people, uh, that we're fixing it, not that we're not fixing it. That's, uh, that, that's, and that they can join in and help us fix it. That, that's where we got to go. We can't go negative. And, uh, so anyway, that's all I have to say. That's my lecture for today. Sad truth. Sorry.
May I add just a smidge? To the, the political flags is the ones I was referring to. If it could, you know, if you're going to cut out the flags, the political flags for the school, then I would think political flags for the, or political pins would, would fall into that same thing. But I do understand your religion and freedom. You can't, you can't, so, you know, stop that and that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, and thank you for being concerned.
Hang on. So we have, uh, one more virtual comment, uh, that I just got notified of, so. Austin, are you there? Austin?
I, I'm here. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Am my mic alright? Okay. Hi, my name is Austin McNew and I teach second grade at Fort Benoit Elementary. I want to start by thanking the board for their efforts in doing what is right for our students with the information available to them. I'm sincerely grateful you take the time to listen to our students today, both their concerns and their celebrations. I hope you make an honest effort to understand their responses and do what is in your power to support them. Last I heard from staff and board members was a concern around racial slurs and hate speech. Uh, more experienced board members shared they've heard these before, um, but I'm unaware what's being done about it. So if you guys could share that. There's a concern I have around the editing of our district's flag policy. Why was the word A in the changed to only the American flag? A board member has shared the proposed policy change is to avoid controversy. I'm wondering which flag or flags, uh, are causing controversy in our classrooms. It's likely this has unintended consequences for our social studies teachers, history teachers, foreign language teachers, Beaver fans, and even the occasional duck fan. I appreciate board members asking thoughtful and sincere questions around data gathering, uh, for community feedback. Have we considered sending out a district survey to gather that community feedback? We have the tools. It might be worth the investment to know what our community actually thinks. Most often when I see the board talking about community, uh, they seem to reference the same four or five people saying the same things. From my experience, I do not believe these people reflect the whole community of Josephine County. Thank you for the parents' rights resolution and this month's agenda. To quote the resolution, whereas we acknowledge parents are a child's first and foremost educator and have the primary responsibility for the education, care and training of their children, I could not wholeheartedly agree more. However, we are missing a key word, responsibility. When I go to a doctor's office, I have to read and sign the new patient's rights and responsibilities form. I hope we can include the word responsibility in the title of the resolution or any future policy. My twelve years of teaching have shown me three key points of data that are helpful indicators in understanding how parents impact their students' learning. So right, we're talking about parent responsibility, parents' rights. Here are three data points. And I urge you to look at these. Please look at our incoming kindergarten data. What specifically when they start the beginning of the school year? Also look at our data surrounding summer learning loss, right? So where they left us and at the end of second grade and where they start at the beginning of third grade. And finally, our attendance data, where I can confirm roughly one-third of our students do not attend regularly. That means they miss more than ten percent of our school days. All of this can be found on our own website under our district report card, which is accessible to everyone. Lastly, I invite you all for a third time out to my classroom at Fort Benoit. I invited you in the spring when I presented at the board and then again in the summer, when I urge you to vote to approve the health curriculum. I know one of you lives just around the corner from our school, so it's very plausible. Thank you for your time and willingness to listen to all community members, not just those that agree with you. I wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
You can't see me where. All right. Any other reflections from board members?
Yeah, I'll make it way shorter because we're probably burning time. Um, this is a conversation that I've kind of had off and on with different board members and it goes like this. This is our district. We've got to sell this district to the public and convince them that there's a reason to invest. When you say that nothing's happening, that's not accurate. We have an opt-out policy. We hadn't had one before. Is it, is the, is the language perfect? Probably not. At least we have them. And, um, we went out and did a walk and talk in that new athletic facility. What is it? Six hundred fifty thousand dollars? That's not nothing. How long did that take to do? Probably two, three years, maybe. I don't even know between the engineering and everything, one year. Did it in one year. So, um, we know we have limited resources. We know we have a big wish list. We've got to prioritize it like Pat was saying, let's find a win. But then we, and we got to publicize that win too. So my friend with the red glasses who are just amazing, um, is, you know, got his hands full, but that's the thing we have to do is, is we have to find a way to talk to the people driving down Laurel Street or River Street or or in Merlin and convince them that this is something special and something worth it. It's up to us to sell it, not just to tear it down. So if you've got some good ideas, we'd love to hear it. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Moving on to reports. Academic report, middle schooled.
So invite our middle school administrative team up here to come and discuss some of the things that they are doing uh, to help our students in theirs of, uh, reading and math. I think they're going to be talking about reading specifically tonight. Go ahead and introduce yourself, gentlemen, and take it away.
Uh, Stephen Fuller, I'm the principal at Applegate School and Williams Elementary School.
Uh, Mark Higgins, principal of Lincoln Savage Middle School.
Danny Pratt, Lorna Burn Middle School.
Well, we aren't actually shoot it up there. We got it.
While we're waiting, I'm just going to give a huge shout out to these amazing principals in our district, leading our middle school, where if you remember middle school, it is a challenging time in your life. And these three humans leave their buildings with compassion and dedication, making sure all kids get what they need. So they're going to share with you what we work on as a team. And I applaud them and say thanks. I love working alongside with each of you and your other colleagues too.
Well, uh, we're super excited to be here and talk about some of the things that we're doing this year. This is my, uh, six years of building principal and I have seen us put a much higher emphasis on academic growth. And while we're not where we want to be, uh,
Go over the microphone.
Yeah, I can do that. I can do that. Yeah, absolutely.
Big fan, Rob. Uh, we are really trying to put more of an emphasis than ever before on our academic growth. We're not where we want to be, uh, by any means, but we are trying our absolute hardest. So we're going to talk about some things that we've changed to put more of a priority on being able to see where the kids are at and then take them as far as we can. So over to Mark Higgins.
Thanks, Dan. So the district mission and vision is in front of us here. And the one piece that we constantly come back to is to ensure the high levels of learning for all. So to do that, we really have to be able to dig into the data in front of us and not only look at it, but understand it and then use that data in a meaningful way to impact the lives of our students. So we've gone through the PLC process. I think we're on iteration number three. And we are finally drilling it down to the needs of the students, looking at it through the lens of better teaching, which is incredible. It's not only leading to higher student outcomes, but it's also leading to a greater depth of knowledge within the field, within our educators in the building. And the other thing that this is doing is by broadening who we are inviting into these meetings, we are raising the ceiling for employees that have never been able to be a part of these meetings. So our classified and our support staff, we are raising their ceilings. We are building confidence and we are building value within that, uh, human capital, which is incredible because the big umbrella here is the safety and security and understanding and care and compassion of our students. Having all of our employees understand the learning needs of our students absolutely supports that slide in front of us. It's been an incredible journey. We, you know, we're partway through it. I don't know that we'll ever get there. If we do, I think we need to find a new journey. But it's been exciting and I would reiterate what Mr. Pratt said. Um, we have a ways to go, but at least we're walking that path. So thank you for your time.
All right. So we tried, we decided as a, as a middle school to really focus on literacy, how our kids can uh, read. And we use the Dibbles test from the University of Oregon, which basically counts how many words that you read and then the accuracy that you read them at. And so we discussed that. We have measurements at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, and at the end of the year, and then we do little dips between it. So that's kind of what we're going to be talking about in our data.
So up there you can see, uh, the, the Dibbles test is a, is a quick one-minute read. Um, and it's a grade level passage. That's an example of, of a portion. It's not the whole passage, but a portion of a passage that a seventh grader would read. You put in from, tell them to start, start the timer for a minute. They read, you mark where they finished and you count the number of words they got correct and any words that they missed. And then we gather all that data. You can see the next slide is where we started the year. Um, you can see that our sixth graders, and I don't have my glasses on, so I can't actually read the percentages right now. But we have forty-eight percent of our sixth graders are reading, uh, at the number of words per minute, a hundred twenty-six words a minute or higher. So forty-eight percent of our sixth graders are reading a hundred and twenty-eight or more words in a minute. And seventy percent of them are reading at ninety-six percent accuracy or higher. Um, seventh grade was reading their, their goal to start the year is again is a hundred and twenty-six words a minute, ninety-six percent accuracy. And then eighth grade is a hundred and twenty-five words a minute at a grade level passage and at ninety-six percent accuracy. So that's where we started the year. Uh, in September, we meet regularly as we, as we monitor the progress, look at the data, see how each individual kids, we're looking kid by kid, skill by skill, and we're looking at each kid individually and making individual plans going forward on how to, how to get every student, our goals is to get every student up to that goal.
Just so that you understand what the benchmark means, it doesn't mean that only forty-eight percent can read. That's not what that number means. Um, it just means for the level for the students at the beginning of that year on a passage that they're reading enough words. So they're reading. I just want to make sure that's clear that it's not saying that only forty-eight percent at sixth grade know how to read. That's not what the data means. So just point of clarification.
I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
No, you're good.
Forty-eight percent of our kids are reading at a hundred and twenty-three words or more a minute. So. All right.
All right. So we, we have been gathering this data and we know where we're at. And so now we had to get kind of a game plan on how to go about moving forward. And so we went into a bunch of, uh, conferences and we really built in some interventions so that if a kid's behind, they have an opportunity to grow. And so we did a bunch of things. One of the big things is, is we had schedule changes to where kids can get additional time to read, to work on their math. But really in this one, we're really concentrating on our literacy. We've also collected it and then we talk about it, you know, the best, the best way to have changes to look at it, see it, and then address it. And so we're not pushing this underneath the rug and just saying, oh, we'll push it up to high school. They'll fix it. We're, we're fixing the problems as soon as possible and giving a kid a chance to do it right then and there and not wait until right before the semester ends to try to raise their grade.
So I, yeah, I know this one is a little smaller and harder to read, but this is just a an example of how we're collecting the data and then reflecting upon the data with those that we're inviting to the table. The next step, and some of us are doing this currently, is we're inviting the individual student to the table as well, so that they understand what their goal is, what their responsibility in the, in their learning is as well. So for me, the, the important piece here is looking at the data and then being able to reflect upon why the data is telling us what it is, right? Where are our misses? Where are our gains? And then expanding that understanding not only to our students, but our workforce as well, because the better we all understand this, the easier we can communicate what those goals are to the kids and then celebrate their wins when we see them. And we are seeing wins. So that is something to celebrate. Thank you.
Don't go yet. Don't go yet. Any, any questions for?
I just was going to comment. Um, I know there was recently a social media post, uh, around some student achievements in middle school. Is that something you guys were going to share about tonight also? And is it kind of relate to this topic of reading? Cause I, I was really impressed and I, and with the things the students were saying, and I feel like it would be great to talk about here if you have a second.
Yeah, I'm super excited to talk about this. So one of the things we found is that we have these kids that are multiple grade levels behind and thanks to Jessica Durant and being able to find it, we've bought uh, the Read One Eighty program that's helping kids that have low, low levels, we're talking multiple grade levels of reading behind and raising them up grade levels at a time. So we have kids that started sixth grade at a kindergarten reading level and now as eighth graders are in the seventh grade reading level, which is a huge, it's a miracle worker. And we have, you know, a phenomenal teacher teaching it at Lorna Burn. And now we kind of started it and now it's going to the other schools to make sure that they have it. So we have a program that's working. We have people that believe in it and we're trying to do our very best to deliver a better product to the high schools and then to the community.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, first reading, flag, display and salutes, Mr. Valenzuela.
So you have policy INDB for your review and consideration for next month, uh, for a second read and a possible adoption. Uh, policy INDB was actually updated in May. The, um, the change that you'll note is, uh, one that's been talked about a couple of different times. It changes the word A US flag to only the US flag will be displayed. Um, and that was a request that came from a couple of different board meetings. So it's for your review and consideration.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Valenzuela?
Ready for a motion?
Uh, no, this is first reading. Um, all right. Leadership through core values, Mr. Eric Lathan.
So as, as Mr. Lathan and, uh, I believe Ms. Butler come up to talk about leadership through core values, this is something that you'll hear on multiple occasions as, as we've tasked our schools to not only uh, lead through core values, but adopt and, and really teach their students what these core values mean. And so tonight you're going to hear that first of that series uh, with Illinois Valley's set of core values. So take it away. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, uh, Superintendent Valenzuela and board for letting us present about All right. Thank you, uh Superintendent Valenzuela and Board for letting us present about core values and uh the impact it's had here at uh Illinois Valley High School. Uh, when you look in the back, you can see we have a, a mantra there that says live red and uh red means or respect, excellence and determination. And uh, one of the things that our uh students have done is they've really bought into the concept of making sure that uh they embody this. And as they do, we've noticed a lot of uh impact positively in our school culture, um in our school climate and ultimately in the academic success uh of our students, the way that they treat one another. Uh, the way that they uh think about themselves and their peers and uh their achievements as well. And so some of the things that we do um to try and uh make sure we recognize our students when they are demonstrating these core values is we have a positive note system. And uh, it is a system where um we send out a positive note or staff send out and recognize students for the positive things that they do here in our school. Um, and we've sent out a little over three thousand positive notes. And each note is actually a email that goes to everybody in the student information system. So a positive note would probably be three or four different emails. Uh, and what we've noticed is that uh it creates conversation about things that we value here at the school, things like respect, excellence and determination uh in the homes. And it creates opportunity. I've had um staff members say thanks as a student comes up and says, that's the first time my parents ever said they were proud of me. Uh, we've had uh students actually um on social media, you know, recognize one another. Uh, and uh, and, and the community recognizing students for doing different things and how they uh represent themselves in our school and our district through these core values. Um, and uh, we also have a system where students can recognize one another. Uh, it's called Red Leaders and they recognize one another for demonstrating these core values of respect, excellence and determination. Um, and uh, there's a variety of other things. We'll go in the the classrooms and do some monthly themes. I know Superintendent Valenzuela has, has been there with us for a few of them. If the board is ever, I know Rich, you actually have, have experienced that uh at another school and um, you know, if the board has ever has an opportunity to be here, we'd love to take you and, and show you some of the things we do to uh to reinforce respect, excellence and determination. And we, we feel that it's had a really positive impact. I'll let Ms. Butler chat really quickly about um the feel of our school and then a few things and some of the data around uh those changes.
Thank you. A couple of other things is the Red Leader forms are also for staff. Students can recognize staff and it's been really fun to see how the students have noticed little things that our staff does as well. And uh, and how much that helps grow those relationships. Um, so I get to deal with um incidents and referrals as a vice principal here. Um, but this year I have noticed as I've been able to tie um the actions of students back into red, how they are acting and showing those values or how they aren't. And is it above the line behavior? It's really been able to have some rich and deep conversations um and help them better understand things, not only from their perspective, because we all know teenagers tend to kind of live in their little box a little bit. Um, but also help them think about how they're impacting uh the other student, how they're impacting their classroom, um how they're impacting learning for others. And that has been a really positive um thing that we've been able to do. We've also incorporated a reflection form um into our um room where students will sort of launch attention and things like that and give them a chance um to reflect there, but also have a conversation um with Shelley White, our person who runs um, runs that program. And been able to really um help them think through the process. We've seen a decrease in in-school and out-of-school suspensions compared to previous years. And also this year, knock on wood, we've had no fights or assaults this year so far. So it's really truly made a, a positive impact here at the school that we love. Um, I personally love the calmer feel. Um, we aren't as reactive as we used to be. We are much more proactive. Um, not that we aren't reactive at times, I mean, things happen, but just that feel of not being heightened all the time, waiting for the next thing to happen, but knowing that we have systems in place and knowing that we have this program in place that has helped students um is huge. We get to focus on relationships. I get the opportunity to support my students better. Um, red is being spread throughout. We're now working on spreading red throughout all of our extracurricular activities. I talk with my coaches um about what red means and how they can focus on it in their practices as well. And we're starting to see um that come to fruition as well. And we do have a video where a few of our students actually talk about some information and Rob, if you can go ahead and get that up, that'd be great.
I think it's muted on your computer, Jess.
All right, the volume wasn't great with that. Now mine, mine, I'm doing the same thing, Rob. All right, there we go. Um, uh, we'll, we'll send you guys a link to that as well if you'd like to, to see it a little bit uh better, but um, you know, that, that's kind of what we're doing. And that's what le- leading through core values means and, and that focus has really helped um create an atmosphere and create those intentional relationships that Ms. Butler was talking about. So, and those are student to student, student to staff and uh, and, and staff to staff as well. So, thank you. You have any questions?
All right, any questions for Mr. Lathan before he steps away? Thank you for what you do. Thank you, Ms. Butler.
I'll just make a quick comment. Sorry, not to belabor, but um Mr. Lathan had a similar program at North Valley High School where um my kids attended and we got notes home all the time. And they were from peers, they were from teachers, they and they were really great. And they did give us something to connect about in the evening. Oh, it looks like you did great on your test. It, you know, your co- your classmate recognized you for something that you did. And I think that really does make a positive impact in the school and I have appreciated it as a parent. And so I want to reflect that back. I'm glad to see that happening here as well.
Okay, um, Three Rivers School District uh Board Resolution. Uh, this is, this is first reading. Um, the reason we moved it to first reading, uh, most of it reads really well, but what I want is since I have five, five school board members, I would like your comments on it. And if you could submit them to Mr. Valenzuela. Um, I want to come up with something that's more personable from you as far as things that you think are, are really important in the, in the parental rights uh um resolution. Um, a big thing on the, on the, on the resolution, and I think it's, I think it's great that we're doing one, um you know, is, is that, you know, this, this kind of, this sets kind of the tone for how, how we see um our interaction from a school district uh with parents and uh, and, and their students. And so this is, this is a, this is an important document that you need to read and, and submit your input on before we uh, before we go. Um, I think Mr. Valenzuela did a good job of um putting together a uh um, a draft here for us. Um, but uh, please submit your comments to him. Uh, we'll go over this at the agenda meeting. Uh, compile it and get it out to you and make sure that it's what you want uh before we, before we vote on it. Because I really would hate to adopt the resolution on like a three, two vote. I would prefer it to be a five O vote and have the language in there that you want to have in there. All right, any questions on that?
Are we going to discuss it now or just later?
Um, you can discuss anything. Yeah, I mean, there, uh, we're open for discussion right now. So go ahead and answer.
Okay, I, I'd like uh to adopt Becky's idea of putting uh parents' rights in education resolution, so adding the in-education on the second line under the Three Rivers School District School Board. Um, and then also I don't know why our, there's not a space to sign for each of the uh school board members, because if we, if we set the policy, there should be a a signature for each.
We pass it by motion and then it's like every other thing that's passed by motion, it's signed by me and the superintendent.
Only, okay. And, and board chair.
Yeah.
I do have to say for, in discussion, I, the comment that received around responsibilities and comparing that to rights and responsibilities documents that are done in other sectors. I kind of blew up my mind in thinking about potentially increasing language around parental responsibility. I see this in the first line. But I do think that that is, that, that is a wonderful concept to consider how we could really build that parental responsibility piece stronger into this, because I don't feel like beyond that first line, it it carries through. And, and I do feel like there is so much importance in the parental responsibilities to, supporting their children's education and their success in school and their homework and all of those things. And we can't succeed without that. We can't succeed by just stating rights. Um, we need to work together. So I don't know, that would be a comment I would have and maybe I could think of looking at that. I don't know if there are any ideas around that. I would encourage any ideas, you know, from people listening um coming through uh to us in email, but, but if this is our document, I would love it to read how we want that to be with our community.
Any other comments? All right, um, please send them to uh, uh, Mr. Valenzuela. You can CC me. Um, I am, you know, I mean, I I've always viewed education as a three-legged stool, the teacher, the student and the parent. What I see in the community, and I'll just be straight up, is I don't see the parent. And you ask where, you ask where the deficiency is. It's not in all parents, but I, but, but for our students that, you know, um, you ask what the, you know, where, where it comes off. And, and I hear, I see, I see head shaking um from all the years of experience and, you know, with this. Um, but uh, um you asked what the missing piece is. That's the missing piece.
Well, one, one of the missing pieces that this is why this is important is uh many people have given up and they don't know what their rights are and they're scared if they bring in those rights, we won't listen. So we want to make it clear to people that we're here, we listen, uh, except for you. I was ignoring you, Rick. Uh, but the, anyway, the uh, it's uh, anyway, but it, it, so they can come here. I want to see a double this audience the next time. Uh, we, we I, I want to make it very perfectly clear that parents can come to us. They have certain privileges, certain things we have to listen to and that we'll respect those opinions. And that's how you build trust. So the, even though parents have to do that too, uh, they might not waste their time if, if they don't think we're listening or caring and we do listen, we do care. Just not as fast as some people like, but we're doing the best we can. So we're good.
All right, um, well, any other comments? Uh, we've got communication of the board, um, suggested future agenda items. Anybody? All right, none here and none. Uh, next board regular session is the fifteenth on Wednesday. We have an executive session beforehand. Or special session, yeah. And then uh, uh, board work session on the fifth of February. Um, we'll take topics and board regular session on the, on the nineteenth will be out at Sosa. Um, we will have an executive session before then because we will be doing the superintendent's evaluation. Um, in reminder of the uh, uh legislator's reception. And with that, we are adjourned.
I, I'm just a little behind. Um, the, I want to see what our current opt-out letter is so we can review it. And then uh, in an appropriate time, maybe one or two weeks with appropriate notice that we discuss it and, and, and settle out a form for it. It doesn't have to be next week. Um, we're in this for the long run and it has to be carefully considered. So uh, why don't we see next week, bring what, what you've got at this point and then we'll talk about it and hopefully at the, the next meeting, we might be able to do something or make some modifications. So anyway, that's it.
All right, um.
Yeah, I messed you up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did. Um, yeah, we are going to adjourn. Um, thank you.